He likes that damn way too much.
Favorite part of my meeting. All right, City Council is now called to order on April 8, 2025 at 6:01 PM. Ms. Agnew, would you please call and roll?
Mayor Hendrick.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Stoker.
Present.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Vazquez.
Here.
Councilmember Cornell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. All right, let's do our invocation. It's Pastor Don Belk here from the Tanglewood Church of Christ. Oh, Pastor, would you... Everybody please stand if you're able.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, as we approach your throne in the name of your son Jesus, we ask that you be with each one here today. We ask that you watch over the first responders here in Odessa, that you keep them safe. We often put them in a den of snakes and expect them to come out and keep us safe. And we do ask that you bless them and their families. And Father, we do ask that you be with these members here as you have put them in a power, in a place of power, and ask that you help them to continue to watch over your people and watch over the surroundings of us. We realize, Father, that the mantle of responsibility that you've put on their shoulders is one that doesn't come without strings. And we do ask that you continue to bless them, keep their families safe, keep them healthy, and ask that you continue to guide them in the things that they do. Father, we love you. We want that to show in everything that we do. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Belk. We appreciate it. Councilman Stoker, please lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag. A pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, there's no proclamations. Is there any citizens' comments on non-agenda items tonight?
Yes, sir, we do.
Well, fantastic. Who is it have?
Okay, just a reminder, each speaker will be limited to three minutes. As your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. In accordance with the open medians law, the City Council cannot respond. However, council can direct the city manager or staff member to contact you. First up, Dallas Kennedy.
Hello, Mayor, Council. My name's Dallas Kennedy, 43 Aginburg Court. First, I want to start by apologizing to Councilmember Stoker. He's already heard my ramblings twice, and he's going to have to hear it a third time. So I apologize for that. But I want to thank the City Council for fighting the TGAA and going into lawsuit with them. I encourage you to continue this fight, not to give up. I've learned recently that Matt Armstrong, who is part of... Well, he says he's not part of the TGAA. Two years ago, he was in Kennedale talking to their city council, trying to get him involved, and said he'd been working on TGAA for six years. Kennedale was smart and said no. He is currently behind a bunch of candidates trying to take over Kennedale's city council. He also recently... Anthony Wilder went to Pilot Point, tried to get Pilot Point to sign up. Their mayor was behind it. The city council struck him down, said absolutely not. Their city attorney actually pointed out to him how this doesn't even... It's not legal. According to their... They're trying to use the Interlocal Cooperation Act, and that's for goods and services such as insurance. And what TGAA offers doesn't fall under that. So it's not even a legal organization. But I just want to encourage y'all to keep your eyes out for these kinds of organizations. They're not done. Recently, Midland ISD signed up with a group called the Texans with Excellence in Education. The CEO of that organization happens to be the wife of Matt Armstrong. They are... There is a group that call themselves conservatives, call themselves Republicans. They're not. They're not a good group, and they are actively trying to take over all our local governments. We have to make sure that we're watching out for these groups, that our school districts don't fall for this stuff, our counties don't fall for this stuff, the city doesn't fall for this stuff, and that we don't sign our sovereignty over to a bunch of nutcases who are trying to tie us up in litigation and just make money off our cities. So thank you very much for fighting this. Don't settle. Because we were the ones who supposedly made this organization legal, we need to be the city that shuts this organization down for good and exposes these loons and tell them, "We're not going to sign our sovereignty over to any groups." So thank you very much.
Thanks, Dallas.
Chairholder.
Carol.
Thank you. I want to thank, first of all, all of you for your time. We want to let you know that we, Lulac Hispanic Heritage of Odessa, believe the words you have spoken and continue to repeat about supporting and continuing our friendship and community involvement with a vision of a better Odessa for all of us. We are very cognizant of the time constraints all of us have when we're struggling to make a livelihood to secure a safe and sound family and home environment. We must continue to work together to make this a productive situation for all of us. But in doing so, we must remember why we want to achieve this for all of us. We thank God for the opportunities and potential that we have now and want to continue to move forward by nurturing all of us and our neighbors. I am sure we all want to share this beautiful city's potential. In doing so, we want to acknowledge... I wrote it all down. Marketing our cultural perspective. Our Latino community is big in numbers and even larger in the marketing power and money situation that we can bring to Odessa, even larger than we can even imagine, and we can bring it to the table. Our organization has survived many struggles within all the political entities in Hector County, with the city of Odessa, with all of the voting entities. We have survived it. But our proudest moments have been when our ethnicity, our culture, our history are noted within our entire population and not just our population. For well over 40 years, we have had proclamations written and read into the minutes of elected boards, such as the City Council, of course, such as the Commissioners' Court, the school boards, so that we can be a part of the history of Odessa. We come before you to ask you to step beyond yours and ours most promising expectations and help support celebrations for our beloved culture and ancestry. For years, everyone wants to include us in their promises and programs and projects, but the pieces never fully come together. And here we are again. In 2025, we still don't have a full force going all the way downtown Odessa to I-20. It's still not happening. People, when they come to Odessa, they get off of I-20, and they don't see what we could be seeing. That area has to be improved for all of us. So we don't have a major street named after our strongest and finest predecessors, no notation of our legendary leaders who helped to construct and assemble the beauty of what Odessa is today. Inside and alongside, all of us are in the ranching and oil industries that helped build the city of Odessa. We're generating unprecedented numbers in the world of authentic restaurants. But honestly, how integrated is the South Side to the general public of Odessa? How much effort is put into building new markets in that part of town or even West Odessa? Our Latino population is not confined to any direct section of Odessa, but our history and traditions in the design of this city is in the South Side of Odessa. We want you to consider the funding for our three major events, and this does not even include Hispanic Heritage Month, which we celebrate with calendars, billboards, et cetera, just to highlight and bring attention to the pride that we have for our ancestry, for the contributions that they've done to the Hispanic community and to our schools. Fiesta West Texas, Tejano Supercar Show, many other cultural Tejano initiatives begin with Hispanic Heritage of Odessa under Lulac and have continued to promote and put Odessa on the map for their tourism attractions. I have gotten calls from tourists coming through here from Japan and Norway because they want to celebrate or they want to experience the Latino culture. And there's... All we can do is pick them up and take them to a restaurant. We don't have a museum. We don't have a library. We don't have a specific place for tourism to really thrive in our culture. We know all the eating places, and they serve incredible, tremendous food. You know the Hacienda Event Center. You know Dos Amigos Rancho on Goldr. All of those are part of our culture. Give us a chance to prove what we already know we can do. We have been doing this for over 40 years. Our parents took us to fiestas and jamaicas at the churches. We learned how to do and how to promote. We had 10 times bigger an event for Dia de los Muertos with not a dime from the city of Odessa. 50,000 was spent on an out-of-town, and we're telling you that we can do better, we can do just as good. And we even offered to work for the city of Odessa if that's what it takes, under a contract. But we want to be able to develop all of what we've already done, and the potential is unlimited. What the previous administration forgot was that we are Dia de los Muertos. We are Septiembre, 16 de septiembre, and we are Cinco de Mayo. And that's what we're proposing, that you look at this and you consider it. And I think Norma gave you a proposal.
I'll be emailing it to them.
You should have a proposal in your hands that describes what we've already done and how much it's taken us to do it. And if we had had 50,000, we could have brought you a tremendous, even bigger than Dallas, Dia de los Muertos in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
And let's put that on the agenda for the next meeting so we can address it at the next council meeting, okay? I don't know what it says yet, Carol, but whatever it says, we'll put it on the agenda for discussion.
The six o'clock meeting.
Six o'clock meeting. You'll be on the next agenda, okay?
Yeah. Okay, so we still need to tell you that we will apply for your hot fund. But for this year, we would need a special consideration. Okay?
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. All right, any others?
No, sir.
Okay, gentlemen, let's move into our consent agenda. If anyone had a chance to look at the minutes workshops and the other items, if so, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion from Councilman Cornell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Haney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move on to our regular agenda. Item number five. Consider the recommendations from outside council regarding the issuance of Request for Proposals 25-51310-05 through 08 regarding the leasing of city mineral, not surface, tracts of oil and development. Posik, how are you this afternoon?
Just fine, Mayor. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
All, for those who have not met me before, my name is Steve Posik. I'm a partner with the law firm of Brockett, McNeil &amp; Posik, LLP in Midland, and I am outside counsel for the city of Odessa on certain oil and gas matters. Here today, we are putting up for consideration and approval the issuance of Requests for Proposal 25-51310-05 through 08. The genesis of this particular set of RFPs was actually contact the city received from Diamondback Energy. Diamondback was missing a very small .13 acre tract from a drilling unit that they intend to drill on the east side of downtown. Residents of downtown will not notice it. The surface side is some four miles or it's south of town, and the actual well will run four miles underneath town. Preparing an RFP and putting the city to that expense, we knew that we had other... We, the city, had other open acreage that we could go ahead and issue RFPs on. So for the sake of efficiency, we put together three other RFPs to put out into the market to see if Diamondback or any other companies would like to go ahead and lease that acreage. Just running quickly through the RFPs, -05 is the .13 acre tract that we were initially asked about. It's near 10th and Idlewood. -06 is a little over a two-acre tract at 8th and Washington. -07 is a five-acre tract near 12th and Muskingham, and -08 is near 13th and Washington. It's roughly a two-acre tract. These are not large acreage positions. They will, if we receive acceptable bids, generate some revenue for the city. Like I said, the idea was to be as efficient as possible. We know, we think we have this acreage, and we want to put it out into the marketplace. The only question I can imagine that might come up is, you know, why issue an RFP for a very small .13 acre tract? There has been a sentiment since I started representing the city two or three years ago that we do want to, to the extent decorum and the law allows, be a good partner to the industry. And when an operator calls up and says, "Hey, we could... We have an interest in paying you for this," we went ahead and took on the task and said, "Yeah, we'll put it through the correct RFP process, and you'll have an opportunity to bid on it," along with everybody else who we thought might have interest. We have taken that same approach when it comes to easements, to other acreage that we've put out for RFPs specifically in 2023 and with seismic testing, all of which my firm has been involved in. But with all of that said, we would ask that the City Council approve these four Requests for Proposals so that we can get them issued and start getting bids in. And I am happy to answer any questions the council or Mr. Mayor you may have.
Thanks, Steve. Gentlemen, do you have any questions, Steve?
Well, you mentioned a couple of what appear to be residential area locations. You said 8th and Washington and 12th and Washington.
13th and Washington and also 10th and Idlewood, 8th and Washington. These are residential areas. I don't want to jump the gun. Councilman Vasquez, please go ahead and ask a question.
Well, that's going to be my question. I don't understand the leasing request in residential areas.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Steve.
Mr. Councilman Thompson, I don't want to take your thunder.
No, it's okay. We own the minerals under those sections.
As a city?
As a city.
Okay.
They're going to drill from south of towns. There's not even four miles. People will never know it. They don't own the minerals. You don't own the minerals under your house. Somebody else does.
Okay.
Steve, about a year back or so, when we thumped those properties, these properties were involved and looked favorable.
Yes, as a matter of fact.
Two, four miles.
As a... Councilman Cornell asked a good question about an arrangement, a transaction, that the city did with Dawson Geophysical. I think it was almost two years ago now. Where Dawson put sensors all over town and actually analyzed what the rock underground might look like and whether it was appropriate for drilling. We were not privy to the results of that, although the city was compensated well for our cooperation. But what has become clear is, is that the production that was going on between Midland and Odessa that at one point only went so far as the Parks Bell Ranch is now getting closer and closer to downtown and is really on our doorstep now. I am no geologist. I am no geophysicist. I am just a local lawyer from Midland. But it seems to me that these majors, the major oil and gas development companies, are seeing good rock underneath this.
Does this kind of drilling for these minerals, is there potential of causing problems with the water system or anything like that?
Always. But that is why we have a lot of regulations, both at the federal, state, and local level, that these are hoops that the companies who drill have to go through to prove to the municipality, to the TCEQ, to the EPA, that their operations will not impact the water supply.
You say they're going to be drilling from where? Four miles south?
That is correct. They'll be south... If I remember correctly, it's different for every project. My understanding is that the projects that are likely to cover these Requests for Proposal... Remember, I represent the city. I don't represent the development, the exploration companies. My understanding is these pad sites would be south of I-20, and they're going to go up underneath the city, if they get drilled at all. Part of the oil and gas leasing process is that companies who want to explore, they take these leases, and sometimes they don't drill on them. Sometimes they hold them, and they decide, "That's not a project we want to do."
Man, that's a lot of residential you're coming through.
Underneath.
Still underneath. It carries neighborhood from the south, Muskingham, Twip, and just like Councilman Vasquez was saying, that's neighborhood. That's residential. They got to come up under the resident to get to it. I fracked for years also. I understand. I was in frack.
Do you understand how deep they are?
Yeah, I understand you're still going under the neighborhood. And I understand there's earthquakes going on around here.
Y'all still understand this is a lot of money we're talking about, potentially?
Money ain't everything. It's good, but it ain't everything.
All right, council, any other questions?
Good.
Thank you for taking the questions.
My pleasure.
All right, I need a... Is there a motion on the floor?
I move approval of Steve Posik and firm issuing the RFPs to lease the minerals that he discussed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Thompson, a second by Councilman Haney. You need more discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed. All right, let's go next agenda item. Number six, consider authorizing a purchase order with vendor GTS Technology Solutions, Inc. for the purchase of Panasonic CF33s medic kits and installation for five Odessa fire rescue medics. Assistant Chief Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yeah, this is a... Just asking you all to consider authorizing the purchase of MDTs. And it's basically our IT for all our ambulances. That includes the computers. The MDTs you read there stands for mobile data terminals. That's how we communicate with our dispatch. That's how we get critical information to our guys and women, and it lets us know what kind of scenes we're going to. And it's basically all our IT stuff for our ambulances that we're hoping to receive in fall of this year. This proposal will come... It's a budget item through our IT department. We've been working with them. As you see there, for the price of $110,000, $159.25, and GTS would be the vendor. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Is this in your budget?
It is. It's a budgeted item. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I move that we approve the request.
There's a motion on the floor from Councilman Vasquez. Is there a second? Councilman Haney has a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to agenda item number seven, a public hearing. We're going to open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Lico Energy Investments for a zone change from SPD-DR, Special Drilling, Dwelling District, drilling reservation to SPD, Special Drilling District on 4.8 acres tract of land located Section 2. Liz.
Good evening. How are you today?
Hi, thank you.
So the property involved in this request is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Boise Drive and North Groundview. This is currently designated an SPD DR for Special Dwelling District Reservation and is currently vacant and undeveloped. The applicant is seeking this zone change for the purpose of developing residential in this area. They are planning to do 21 lots ranging from 6,875 square feet to 13,547. They are continuing the zoning that's already established there. That's why that's the request that they're asking for. We did submit it internally. No objections were received. We also did not receive any objections from the community. Therefore, staff is recommending for the zone change.
Thank you. Let's open up a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item can do so. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Since there's no comments, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions?
This area does have sewer and water on it, right?
Correct.
Mayor, I move approval of this request.
There's a motion by Councilman Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Cornell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. All right, Liz, don't move a muscle because on section... Agenda item eight, open a public hearing to consider approval of request by S31B42LLC for a zone change from future development district to a light industrial district on a 41.44 acre tract of land situated in southeast quarter of Section 31, Hector County, Texas.
Thank you. Again, the property involved in this request is located on the east side of Southwest Loop 338, approximately 100 feet south of West Murphy Street. The site is currently designated as future development, so this is another one that came in, and no zoning was given to it. So they are now having a project for it. They are requesting for light industrial. They're pretty much dividing the lot to be more like an industrial park, we can say. We did route it out to our staff. No objections were made, and we received no objections to this request. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the zone change to light industrial. I'm now open for any questions.
Let's open up a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, unless item can do so, please limit your comments up to three minutes. Seeing no comments, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Gentlemen, any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
I so move.
Motion by Councilman Vasquez to approve the request. Is there a second?
Second.
Ooh, I think you beat your ass.
He beat you.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Resolution, section, agenda item nine, consider approval of purchase of 11 ZOUL monitors and 13 AEDs Odessa Fire and Rescue that have reached the end of their life.
Assistant Chief Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Back again. All right, I'm going to do my best to try to explain this one. Again, we're going to ask for consideration of your approval of purchasing 11 ZOUL cardiac monitors and 13 AEDs for our ambulances and fire trucks. I have to say, the purpose of this is we... There's an opportunity for us to save the city $682,438.12. Essentially, we're... Essentially, what we're trying to do is downsize our cardiac monitor inventory. And by doing that, we would put AEDs on our fire trucks. This doesn't hamper with patient care. We're still able to give life-saving care to our patients on the fire trucks. And that was the big driving force there. What we're asking on this, we do have some of it budgeted, and we're asking for an amendment, but it's going to be from an account that's not going to affect our fund balance. It's actually a capital outlay that our finance team was gracefully enough to find for us. So it's not going to be affecting our general fund for the amendment of the rest of the money, which is... So what we can supply is the... Let me get my numbers right here. $431,680.80. And the capital outlay that we were able to find would supply the remaining $204,255.88. I know that's a lot of numbers and a lot of explanation, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, can you explain the difference to me in the ZOUL monitors and the AED? I'm sorry, I don't...
Yeah, no, no, that's a good question, and that's my fault. I should have explained that. So our cardiac monitors are just a very high piece of technology that we're able to run EKGs, look at heart attacks. We're able to talk to our hospitals, send them EKGs in advance. And we will carry those still on our ambulances. On the fire trucks, we currently have an AED... Or I'm sorry, a ZOUL monitor. What we're asking is to... What we're asking is to downsize the AEDs, because we feel that we can still offer the, the same service to our citizens, because you, because the current monitors we have now can't even do twelve leads, and I know I'm probably talking too medical here, but, um, we're essentially able to offer the same service with AEDs, which is just way cheaper than the past, and it's great that we were able to do that in, in the past, to have monitors on our engines and stuff, but it's just a lot of money. We're just trying to be reasonable with, with funds.
Sure, thank you. Gentlemen, any other questions? Not entertaining a motion.
So move.
Motion by Councilman Haney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Thompson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
All right, agenda item number ten, reconsider to award bid number twenty-five dash five-two four-ten dash oh-one to R&amp;W Construction, General Contractor, AEC Electric, Electric Contractor, Top One C Construction, uh, for rehabilitation, reconstruction of three-fifteen McKinney Avenue, and approval of agreements.
Yes, hello again.
Yeah, hello.
I'm just here for y'all to reconsider the, um, like you said, the bid award for thirty-five fifteen, or thirty-one, what was it? Thirty-one, three-fifteen McKinney, I apologize, uh, and the approval of the agreements for the rehab reconstruction of this rehab home.
Fantastic. Gentlemen, any questions?
Mr., Mr. Mayor, I'll need to abstain from this.
Okay, Councilman Haney will be abstaining from this, uh, discussion and vote. Gentlemen, any questions for, are you? If not, I entertain a motion.
I so move, Mayor.
There's a motion by Councilman Vasquez to approve, is there a second? Second by Councilman Mitchell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote unanimous with the abstention of, uh, Councilman Haney.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Agenda item eleven, let's consider authorizing Odessa Fire Rescue to accept, allocate, and appropriate Texas Law Enforcement Office Standards Education Funds. Officer Glendo, I mean officer, Omar, I'm sorry. I have promoted you or demoted you, I'm not sure which.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
Good afternoon.
We'd like to consider authorizing OFR to accept, allocate, and appropriate a donation check from Leos for one thousand eighty-eight and ninety-seven cents. Uh, basically, this is a money that's, uh, the Controller of Public Accounts has a, they have an account in state treasury that they, basically they dividend this money to all state, uh, all the police agencies.
Fantastic. Free money, sorta? Any questions?
Does this come out of Austin, or where does it come out of?
From the, uh, Controller of, yes, sir.
Is that kind of annual?
It is an annual, correct, yes.
Anyone else have, any questions? Not entertaining a motion. Motion by Councilman, second, second by Councilman Canal, we're cahoots against me, I'm afraid. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. All right. Item agenda twelve, consider authorizing the civil Odessa Police Department to apply for and accept amended, amending the fiscal budget to appropriate awarded funds as additional revenue and authorizing the expenditure of awarded grant funds from the twenty-twenty-six step commercial vehicle grant. Chief Gurke.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council, uh, this is simply a request to apply for and accept a grant from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Texas Department of Transportation. Um, our portion, excuse me, the, the portion that the state government would, government would give us would be nine thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and sixty cents, there would be a match of twenty-six hundred and thirty-six dollars and six cents. This particular grant will, would focus on commercial motor vehicle enforcement, uh, particularly intersect, intersection traffic control, um, vehicle speed, uh, occupant protection, which is obviously seat belts, those, the distracted driving, and a DWI training program.
Chief Gurke, do we have any officers that are special DOT officers?
Yes, okay, yes. Corporal Mayberry, that, that stands, um, security here, uh, quite often, is certified in all types of commercial motor vehicle enforcement.
Perfect. Gentlemen, any questions for Chief? Not, I accept, entertain a motion.
So move.
There's a motion by Tom, uh, Councilman Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mitchell, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously, but don't move a muscle, Chief, because of number, agenda item thirteen, we're going to consider authorizing the civil Odessa Police Department to apply for and accept amended the fiscal budget to appropriate award funds as additional revenue and authorizing the expenditure of awarded grant funds from the twenty-twenty-five step operation slowdown.
Yes, sir, Mayor, this is, again, a step grant, um, this particular grant is, is targeted at speeding, and there are specific dates that we can actually use these funds. Going back to the, to the first grant and, and to the other three grants here, um, we will spend these funds for overtime. Um, that's basically all we need these funds for, and that's what we, we do, we bring those officers on overtime and, and these grant funds will pay for those overtime hours. Um, this grant, this grant is again for twelve thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents, of that, um, nine thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and sixty cents comes from the state, and twenty-six hundred and thirty-six dollars and six cents comes from, from us as a match. Um, and you will see that there's specific dates, again, program runs from eleven of twenty-five to eleven thirteen of twenty-five, uh, excuse me, seven eleven of, of twenty-five to seven thirteen, um, and then eight-three twenty-five to eight-four of twenty-five, so, I mean, there's specific dates that they want this enforcement.
Gotcha. All right, gentlemen, any questions for Chief? Not entertaining a motion.
So move.
Motion by, I think, Councilman Stoker, is there a second by Councilman Haney, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's prepared unanimously. Next agenda item is thirteen. Excuse me, fourteen, consider authorizing the civil Odessa Police Department to apply for and accept twenty-twenty-five step click it or ticket grant.
Yes, sir, Mayor, uh, as the title will tell you, this is a, a grant, uh, specifically targeted at seat belt usage and, and that sort of thing, so, um, this is for twenty, excuse me, for twelve thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents, again, of which nine hundred, uh, excuse me, ninety-nine hundred and twelve dollars and sixty cents comes from the state, and twenty-six hundred, um, thirty-six dollars and six cents comes from a city match. There are specific dates, uh, that these run also, uh, May sixteenth through May eighteenth, uh, May nineteenth through the twenty-first, excuse me, to the first, June first, June second through June six, excuse me, June fourth, so there's a specific period in there that we will, uh, have extra officers out looking for seat belt violations.
Perfect. Gentlemen, any questions? Not entertaining a motion. Motion by Councilman Haney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stoker, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And last, Chief, is consider authorizing the civil Odessa to apply for and accept amended fiscal budget to award funds for the twenty-twenty-six step speed, occupant protection, intersection traffic control, distracted driving while driving while intoxicated grant.
So this is the, the large grant that we participate in every year, um, we get tho, these funds usually in the fall. Last year, I believe, was fifty-some-one thousand, it should be upwards to eighty-nine thousand, almost ninety thousand this year. Um, of that, eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars, seventy thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-eight cents will come from the state, and the city will have to contribute eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents. This step grant is, uh, this is our big one, um, we use this for everything. This is for speeding enforcement, this is for, uh, red light, stop sign, a DWI, all those types of, all those enforcements. We, we post these overtime spots, we look, we use our intel and our data and we find out the times where most of the, the times and locations where all of our wrecks are happening, what times, uh, DWIs and locations DWIs are most likely to happen, and that's where we put those officers, where they can do the most good. And we use these funds to pay them.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions for the Chief? Don, entertaining a motion.
So move.
Motion by Councilman Stoker, is there a second? Second by Councilman Haney, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thanks, Chief, we appreciate it.
Just as a side, that's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, or three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Uh, of that, a hundred thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars is from the state, so that's, that's a win.
Terrific, that's great. Fantastic job, Chief, great, thank you.
What's the blue badge?
Blue badge is for autism awareness. Um, but it, it also doubles for child abuse awareness for this month.
Well, I seen my wife with it, but I didn't know that time, that's what it was. Sometimes she got a pink bag on, and I was just curious.
That's the fall for breast cancer awareness, yes, sir.
Chief, keep the council aware of what's going on with you.
I, I will send them a memo.
Apparently he wants to ask his wife what. All right, thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Agenda item sixteen is consider approving the purchase of a new Odessa Fire Rescue uniform for each member of the department and the mayor. Oh, I don't think I said that.
And the mayor.
Chief March.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We are here asking for approval to, uh, purchase new uniforms for all personnel in OFR. Uh, the cost is, uh, seventy-three thousand three sixty-eight forty-two, it is budgeted, becoming of our, uh, wearing apparel account. And, uh, we haven't been able to do a full refresh on the uniform, uh, for our, all of our personnel in probably two to three years now, so it's, uh, much needed. So we're taking this opportunity to also, uh, change our uniform type, go to one that is actually, uh, less expensive by half, actually. And Chief Cotton wanted to take the opportunity to also, uh, come up with a new logo and, uh, kind of give a nod to our tradition and our history with, uh, the new logo, so that's what we are here seeking approval for.
How many uniforms per, uh, person?
Uh, this purchase will be three shirts and two pants per person, a hundred and ninety-three personnel that will be getting this.
We're looking in terms of total, we're fully staffed, is what I'm trying to ask.
Yes, sir. How are we looking in terms of that?
Yeah, how are we looking in terms of, how many people, how many fire and rescue personnel do we need or have budget for, and how many do you have?
Uh, well, I believe, uh, the number that Chief Cotton gave command staff before he left was with the new hires that are starting next Monday, we will be down to, uh, fourteen openings, with another five he's expecting that will come on, uh, by May or in May.
Fantastic.
So, single digits is what we're shooting for, shooting for.
Good deal. Fantastic.
And you're wearing the new logo, right?
Uh, well, this was the test logo, but this is what is, it's going to
That's what y'all want, okay.
Drive the new one, it is a, it is, it looks like this, it's just, uh, more of a calligraphy font, a more traditional font as opposed to the, the typical block lettering in this one, but it will say OFD, and that's the nod to our tradition, even though we're Odessa Fire Rescue now.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Ben, how is that, who designed that for you?
Uh, this logo was done by the distributor, GT Distributors, who we're, we're purchasing these from, as one of our many test logos that we sent out to the department. I think I sent a total of five to the whole department and we did a poll to see where everybody landed, what they felt, and the one that, that won that poll was the one that, uh, Chief Cotton also preferred, and he made a few, you know, editorial decisions with it and colors, and that's what we'll be going with.
Excellent. Any other questions? Gentlemen, entertaining a motion.
So move.
Motion by Councilman Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mitchell or Stoker?
He did, man.
Stoker wins.
Right.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm serious about that mayor stuff, Ben, I'm serious. Order one more. All right, let's go to agenda item numbers.
They, they don't make X-rays.
They don't make that size, do they? All right, agenda item seventeen, consider park sign replacement, Johnson Rogers.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Uh, so we're considering, uh, the purchase of forty-three park signs, the total cost would be fifty thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-four cents, that cost includes, uh, shipping, and the estimated ship date is about six weeks out.
How many of our park signs are down right now, John?
Uh, so none are down, but they're, they are all in need of repair, uh, just, uh, due to, to old age.
Okay.
Where.
Sun baked.
Yeah.
Happens, yeah. They're not waterlogged.
No.
Bet they're not.
Little rust.
All right, do you have any questions for John?
So they're, they're all going to look like this?
That's correct, yes, sir.
They have different names on them.
Well, I know that.
Well, more or less look like that, yes, sir.
And then my only question I asked earlier
Where do you get the big bucks?
Was about the, the logo, and they're engraved, I've seen one of these, I've seen the Peggy Grace Lee one, and, you know, if we ever go to a new city logo, how do we update these signs? And so...
So, uh, we can work with the vendor, uh, to possibly, uh, put a plaque, I don't have that answer right now, it's something that we'd have to work with the, the vendor on to, to, uh, to put a new logo or, or whatever the case may be on the sign.
I know, wish, I wish they were green. The logo looks bad on the brown.
How old are, are old signs that, I guess are still standing, how old are they, are there different ages, or, you know?
I do not know the, the age of the signs, but they
They were, you love this analogy, they were the same signs when I was little, so...
That's what I was going to try to suggest, they're probably more than fifty years old.
Definitely time for replacing.
Yes, sir. All right, gentlemen, any questions for John?
Can they be green?
I so move, Mayor.
Uh, there's a motion by Councilman Vasquez to approve, is there a second?
Do they have to be brown?
Motion by Councilman Haney, or Canal.
I'm with you on that, we can, we can, uh, so the, uh...
I was asking if they had to be brown, I think green would look better.
So, if the council wishes to, uh, to look at different, a different color scheme, uh, I can, I can make sure that, uh, I can get that to you, and, and we can look at different options. We can look at a tan, they have tan, uh, and forest green, uh, color schemes, green and white, brown and white, obviously, there's different color schemes if, if you would like a diff, to see different colors. It wouldn't affect the price.
The price can be the same either way, so we can go ahead and, the motion is second on the floor, let's go ahead and vote on it, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion approved, uh, just for, I guess our verification, can you bring us maybe a couple of different colors, green and tan, just for
Sure.
Let's all take a look at a couple before we actually make the order.
Sounds great, absolutely.
Thanks, John, we appreciate it. Thanks, John. All right, let's go to agenda item number eighteen, John, don't move a muscle, we're going to consider McKinney Park splash pad repairs.
Yes, so, uh, we're considering, uh, approval of, of the McKinney Car, McKinney Park splash pad repairs, uh, there are critical pump house repairs needed, uh, the, the most important is the foundation of the pump house, uh, has failed, uh, so the, the, the foundation will need to be fixed, and then in addition, uh, the, the piping currently runs under the, the pump house, uh, to the splash pad, and that, that will be rerouted to over the, overhead, over the ceiling and out the wall, uh, to the, to the, uh, splash pad fixtures. Uh, there will also be, um, updates to the, uh, automation system, uh, the chemical automation system and pumps as well. Uh, the, the total cost of the project is two hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and, uh, sixty-seven cents.
Was the pool, did the pool work last summer?
Uh, no, sir, the splash pad did not work.
All right, gentlemen, does anybody have any questions for John?
That's in your budget?
It is in our, it's, we have it in the park's capital outlay, yes, sir.
Go splash.
Jonathan, this picture that we're looking at, I, I haven't been to McKinney Park anytime soon, but is that the actual?
Yes, sir.
That's it?
It's really a neat deal, I've never been out there. It's really a neat deal. No, that's what I'm saying, but I'm just thinking in terms of, uh, safety and I guess the engineering is such that it's pretty secure, I mean, I'm, I'm just looking at the toppling of that or whatever you might say.
Sure, absolutely, yeah, everything is ADA compliant and, and secure, uh, of course, when the, any, any construction is going on, uh, everything as far as safety will be checked, uh, we will be looking at, uh, all of the, the water fixtures, uh, it, it will be safe when it reopens.
Okay.
John, I hate, I hate to ask this question, but why is the pump house sinking, I mean, do we, I mean, was it poor construction to begin with, do we know?
Uh, from understanding the, it was, that was built, that pump house was built on a From understanding the, it was, that was built, that pump house was built on a landfill, the splash pad. So it's just, it's, it's not a firm foundation to begin with. So the weight of it just started sinking, the floor has collapsed. So it is gonna be, it's, it's a big project to come in, and they're gonna need to rebuild the floor of the pump house.
You know, when it rains out there, man, it floods out there. When we do get rain, it gets real moist out there in that area.
John, what type of downtime are you looking at?
So the, the contractor stated three weeks.
Oh, wow, wow.
I believe that's optimistic. The one thing that I will say, the splash pad at McKinney is not run, the daily operation is not run by the YMCA. So we plan on keeping it open, of course, depending on weather, longer through the season. So it will be open an extended period of time.
And we'll be open by some, we'll be kids are at school.
Absolutely, that's our goal, absolutely.
Mayor, I want to publicly say thank you to this young man for the hard work and good work he's doing, taking care of our Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you, Councilman Vasquez. John, I think we're all very pleased with the job you're doing. Excellent work on this and those other projects. Councilman Mitchell has mentioned some other things will be in our works, maybe with baseball fields and soccer fields. We look forward to hearing proposals for those.
Thank you. We've got a great team.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, guys, any other questions for John? If not, entertaining motion. Yeah, motion by Councilman Haney, is there a second? By Councilman Stoker? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, John. All right, agenda item nineteen, consider an emergency twenty-four inch aerial sewer line replacement. Alex.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
The Utilities Department is here to ask for your consideration and approval of the proposal from Triane Construction for the emergency twenty-four inch aerial sewer line. In July of twenty-twenty-four, Council approved the emergency engineering and design for the repair of the twenty-four inch aerial sewer line. Currently, we have completed the engineering portion and need to proceed with the construction for this repair. Triane Construction is currently on the city's by-board procurement services, and their proposed total cost for this project is one million, six hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. Our department is asking for a fifteen percent contingency to be allocated to this project that equates to two hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and four cents, for a total of one million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. We're also asking Council to consider and approve the interim city manager, Mr. Morton, to negotiate a contract moving forward. This allocation of money is within our wastewater repair and replacement budget.
Thank you.
Is this the line Mr. Sheldon's back when it was leaking?
Yes, sir. So we currently have it on bypass, so we're...
Yeah, that's what I thought, he had it on bypass, yes.
Yes, sir.
No, no, it's been months ago. You know, this, this line's been leaking for a long time.
Quite a while, yes, sir.
Yeah. I can't remember when we looked at it, but it was a long time ago. Gentlemen, any questions for Alex?
Alex, upon receiving approval, how soon would the work begin, and what kind of length of time will it take to complete?
So their proposal is... Just, once we have a contract signed, they can start work. So that's why we're kind of asking Mr. Morton to, or you guys to approve Mr. Morton to negotiate that. And then their project will be complete in September, middle of September.
Thank you, sir.
Gentlemen, any questions, additional questions?
I was just saying, it's on bypass, it's not leaking, so...
No, I know. The picture he showed us before was leaking, so...
Oh, yeah.
It was bad.
All right.
Moving approval.
All right, motion by Councilman Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Canal, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous, thanks, Alex. All right, let's move to agenda item number twenty. Consider approving, amending the ordinance for food truck code of ordinances in chapter six, article six dash six. Omar Glendo, come on up here, sir.
Good afternoon again, thank you. So this is to consider amending the mobile food truck ordinance. This will help streamline the process a lot easier. And I'd also like to thank Councilmember Stoker and Councilmember Mitchell, they've been instrumental in putting this together, as well as Mr. Jones and Mr. Morton. So this is gonna, it took a lot of health department stuff out of there, although they still do their own thing. But this also streamlines it, so you don't have to go to everybody in the city, you just go through, it's a basically one-stop shop. So it'll make it a lot easier.
Fantastic, we appreciate everybody's hard work. Councilman Stoker, to yourself, sir.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. All right, guys, any questions for Omar? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Councilman Stoker makes a motion to approve, is there a second?
One question before we go. How long before... Well, we can just make, make you the payments, because we still have to go...
So first reading, second reading, and then it goes into fact five days.
Okay, I just checked.
Okay.
This will be ready by May.
You want a second, Eddie?
I second.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Councilman Mitchell's second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, let's move to the agenda item number twenty-one. Discuss and consider all civil Odessa commissions and board members, including appointment, reapportment, removing, or modification, including... Norma, I know there's some people that have applied for the animal shelter.
Yes, for the animal shelter, Council received four applications at different times as they came in. I just went ahead and forwarded them to y'all, that's Carmen Haynes, Karen Ward, Christopher Alstra, and Deitra White. Those four are, are willing to serve, they're interested in serving. Councilmember Stoker is recommending Carmen Haynes. And Councilmember Cornell is recommending Deitra White.
Do we just have two open positions?
We only have one.
Different recommendations. It's a matter of deciding who among the two. Flip a coin.
Do we bring the cage out?
Let me ask you this, I see that Connie Kooch is listed at her term expiring at the end of last month. Did she want to serve again?
She did not want to serve again, that's what's causing the vacancy. But she serves until an appointment is made by Council. So that's why her name is Stowe.
So there's two excellent choices, but I've never had this come up before, so I'm not sure if we flip a coin, or we talk...
You discuss it a little bit, and then whoever makes a motion to appoint whoever in seconds, that's, and if it gets voted up or down, and then, once we do that, we'll, we'll keep doing it till we get somebody.
Gotcha. Who's the oldest of the two?
Well, for, for information, I would just say that the animal shelter committee, all those people that are involved and that are favorable for Deitra.
Okay.
Talk to them.
Then I'll make that motion for Deitra White to get that position.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Thompson, and a second by Councilman Haney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We have, sound like we have some excellent applicants for the next open position. All right, any others that are...
No, sir, no others.
My councilman has a vote on how long the meeting is gonna be over, and I hate for him to lose a bet, so...
That's cheating.
If no one makes a motion to adjourn, it's not my fault. I'm not, I'm being nice, so I'm not saying anything. Here, motion to adjourn.